Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board April 25, 2023 meeting. This meeting is being televised by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As usual, we have a jam-packed agenda. But before we get into the jam-packed agenda, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Rang to read us the public announcements.
We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Cable and Internet Committee and Highway Study Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-ma.gov, or by calling Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Green Hanson will be on the town green on April 29, 2023, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the annual cleanup, green up in the morning and Earth Fest event after that. The Hanson Historical Society is hosting its annual Turkey Dinner on Thursday, May 4, 2023, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Camp Kewahney. Speaker Judith Calara will be portraying Hedy Lamar. Tickets are $20. For tickets, please call 781-294-8645. Please leave a message and your call will be returned. Upcoming meetings. Annual May Town Meeting, May 1, 2023. Special May Town Meeting, May 1, 2023. Select Board, May 1, 2023. Annual May Town Meeting, May 2, 2023, if necessary. Special May Town Meeting, May 2, 2023. Select Board, May 2, 2023. Select Board, May 9, 2023.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Rang. We've got a number of appointments on our agenda. Ms. Green, I thought I'd turn it over to you to queue it up.
Uh huh. Okay, so the first appointment is for the administrative assistant to the Hanson Planning Board and Town Planner. In your packet, there is a letter from our Town Planner, Tony DeVraeus. Basically, we held interviews for the administrative assistant to the Planning Board and Town Planner, and Kimberly Cunningham was the candidate that stood out to us. She was, her application as a candidate was presented to the Planning Board at the April 24 meeting, and they did approve her to be appointed as the next administrative assistant to the Planning Board and Town Planner.
Okay. And my understanding is that the Planning Board voted last evening to appoint?
Yes, they did. Yes, they approved her. Yes.
Okay, so you're making a recommendation, the Planning Board voted, and you just need us to...
Just appoint her as the appointing authority. Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Kimberly Cunningham as the assistant to the Planning Board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Next up, we have vote to appoint Mary Collins to service as a member of the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors for fiscal year 2024. Ms. Green.
So she has served as a board of directors prior, and this is kind of just reappointing her for a fiscal year 24 member.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Mary Collins to serve as a member of the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors for fiscal year 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Great. Ms. Green, we have vote to appoint Stephen Smith to service an associate member of the Conservation Committee. I think we need Conservation Commission, and that's going to be important for the vote we take.
It's supposed to be Conservation Commission.
Commission, yep. Do we have an application for, oh, yep.
There's an application there, yes.
Do you know if the Conservation Commission has voted at all on this?
I have not heard from them. They currently don't have any vacancies except for this associate member. I did reach out to Mr. Smith, who was interested in serving.
Okay.
But I have not heard whether the Conservation Commission has voted him in, so we may need to table this.
We have somebody here.
The Conservation Commission did discuss it and did suggest that he fill out the application. There was a question about how many alternates or associates there were, because there were, at that meeting, there were two or three people who wanted to be associate members.
Oh, there were. Okay.
But they're, so, is that something that, how do we change that if it was to be changed?
We could, we'd have to have a vote on it, but I think it's perfectly appropriate at a future meeting for us to talk about, as long as you folks on the Conservation Commission agree and want to add associate members. I think, I remember Mr. Clemmons talking at our strategic planning session, talking about how he wanted to kind of prep and mentor people and get people ready, so that when there was turnover on the Conservation Commission, we'd have people trained, so I don't think he'd have a problem with it. But why don't we plan on having, Ms. Green, if we could have Mr. Clemmons come to our next meeting after town meeting, which I think is the 9th?
Is there enough room for this gentleman?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I did confirm that with, with Mr. Clemmons.
So, Ed, how many other people?
I know of one other, that one other person that was going to be applying.
Okay. So I, I, what, I don't want to, if Phil hasn't, and the Conservation Commission hasn't looked to see whether this is the person that they want, or if, you know, they wanted to recommend somebody else. This, this gentleman is extremely bullish about conservation. I know he's very passionate about it. I have no problem with him as a candidate. What does the board want to do?
Move to accept, to appoint him.
Okay. You agree? Okay. Then, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that's appointing Stephen Smith as an associate member of the Conservation Commission. What is the term for that? When would the term expire?
The term on this is a, I believe it's a one-year term for an associate member.
All right, so for a term to expire in...
June 30 of 2024.
June 30 of 2024. Okay, great. And Ms. Green, next on the agenda is vote to appoint Camp Kewahney caretakers.
Yes, Madam Chair, if, if it's the board will, I am going to need to excuse myself on this. You will find a disclosure in your packet regarding the appointments on this. There's two candidates for appointment to the Camp Kewahney as caretakers, and one of them, I've submitted a disclosure.
How many vacancies?
They have many vacancies. They're looking for caretakers, and they don't, they don't have enough people to fill the positions for the upcoming wedding season and event season.
Okay. So are the candidates Lori Cogan and Jason Green?
Yes.
Those the two that we're considering?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And how many openings are there?
They have many openings. They don't have enough people right now to fill, basically for the events, they don't have enough people.
I don't think you need to recuse yourself, but I will tell you, I don't think those optics look good, and I don't feel comfortable having him work for the town if you're the town administrator. I just think, if we think about how that's gonna, how that potentially could play out, if there were any kind of a performance issue or something, I'd be very concerned about that. I don't know what other people think, but, anybody have any feeling about it? I mean, it's the will of the board, so.
Well, I do think it's a shame that he, if he wants to do something, he's precluded from doing it because his mom works for the town. That's a shame.
I agree. And I mean, you know, the requirement is that you disclose, which you've done. So, what were you going to say, Mr. Smith?
No, I get what you're saying, but I feel like, would you be his direct supervisor?
No.
No, but if there's a performance issue, as we've had in the past with other individuals up at Camp Kewahney, Ms. Green is our personnel director.
I have no problem if there was a performance issue, trust me. Oh, no.
Right, but again, but if we found out that she did something to doctor that, that wouldn't necessarily be on this person, it would be on you.
That's not, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is if there's a performance issue with her son, and again, this is all speculative, I'm not, he's probably a perfectly great kid, and he's probably going to do a great job, then it's going to be very awkward for Ms. Green to be the one to take care of the personnel issue, because it's her son.
Yeah.
If I'm the only one who sees the problem with it, then we can just move to the vote. You guys can appoint him.
I'm just trying to think it out, honestly. I just can't make a decision in 10 seconds. I just have to think about it. My, my, logistically, I get what you're saying. I don't know.
It is a tough one. I'm not, I'm kind of with Joe. I don't see a real issue, but I'm wondering if, like...
So is there any financial ties?
No.
Does he live with you? Do you...
He, he lives in my house, yes, but I...
I don't know if it necessarily makes any difference, though. I don't even know. Scratch that, because I don't even know if that makes any sense, if that even matters.
Well, it does.
Does it?
Yeah, because if, one could argue that by virtue of him living with Ms. Green, that she financially benefits from him being employed by the town.
That's a good point.
But she's not making the decision to employ him and not employ him.
Right.
But she could be making a decision about performance issues. Again, that's just my two cents worth.
Can we, can we go with Lori first while I think about this?
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to appoint Lori Cogan as a caretaker.
I was going to buy you some time.
It's all I'm going to buy you. It's all I'm going to buy you by two minutes, so, make quick.
Did Camp Kewahney, well, let me just, let me delay it then. Did Camp Kewahney make any votes or make any recommendations for this? For either one of them?
They hired both.
Both? Okay, so that makes it easier, I guess.
I will entertain a motion to appoint Lori Cogan as a caretaker at Camp Kewahney.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. I will entertain a motion to appoint Jason Green as a caretaker at Camp Kewahney.
So moved.
It doesn't matter how slowly you say it.
I know, I realize that. No, I just, the fact that they already hired him...
I will second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'm a nay, and I hope that you don't take that personally, Ms. Green. Okay, that moves us on to limitless auto sales, 200 Liberty Street, new application for used auto sales. Ms. Green.
Yes, so we have 200 Liberty Street. The prior owner of that, of that property was the Volvo Class II Auto Dealer.
Yeah.
They sold the property. We have the new owners here, who have been doing a great deal of work to the property to fix it up. They have been in contact with Kerry Glass, our building inspector, who has provided a letter that is in your packet, that they are basically following all of the rules and regulations as far as any type of upgrades to the property. It was already zoned, there's no change of use, so there's, the zoning board of appeals does not need to be involved. And I would recommend, basically granting them a license and welcome them as a new business to the town.
Do you gentlemen want to say anything, or?
We kind of covered it. We bought the property a few months ago, we're renovating the entire property, and my son Sean here is going to help himself on the used cars out of the lot, and we want to keep it clean and looking good to get some buyers in by time, so.
Okay, I mean, you've done an amazing job, just driving by, haven't been in the building, but wow, you guys have really, you know, clearly sunk some money, and you're pretty committed to it, so. Did anybody else have anything that they wanted to?
I think, I also think it looks beautiful. You mentioned here on the description of premises that you're going to have a house with a separate office out back. In the previous, he, he sold him out, out front and didn't use that as a house. I'm not sure if he did or not.
I don't know why he did that, but the office was...
You're going to...
...out of work, so that might have been why.
Yeah.
But we're going to use the back office.
And the house, the front will be residential?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I, I don't know if he used it as a house, but you're just talking about the house, the house that was there.
Yeah.
You're just using it differently.
Right.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it's, it was, it had seen better days by the time you guys bought it, so it's wonderful to see that get cleaned up, and I thank you. Any other? Okay.
Do you have a letter from?
Yes, we have a letter from Mr. Glass saying that he felt comfortable, and I...
I spoke with, I spoke with Deputy Acting Fire Chief. He has an appointment to meet with him on Thursday to redo the building, and he will let me know if there's any issues. He doesn't expect any now.
Okay, so if we were to move forward, we could make a conditional approval based upon our fire chief signing off on it, if that's the way, the will of the board. Ed, you gentlemen are clear that it's 44 vehicles, right? That's the license that was there, and if that should change, or you find that you need something else, you just have to come back and, and get permitted for that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
This says 30.
Well, that's interesting, because...
This says no more than 44.
Kerry's saying, yeah, previous owner to have 44 cars at one time, and I would not to see, want to see this limit increased.
Right, so this says 30, so...
So the, the license itself says 30. What do you guys?
We like 44. I like 44 because...
I can change that.
Okay, all right. I mean, Kerry says 44, and...
I think initially he was thinking 30 with the house going up, but if he's saying 44, I can change that.
Okay, now, okay. So do we want to entertain a motion for 44 cars at Limitless Auto Sales located at 200 Liberty Street, conditioned upon our fire chief, Robert O'Brien, finding no, nothing objectionable there?
I'll make that motion, just with the wording being, per Mr. Glass says, a maximum of 44 cars, which is what, which is congruent with what the license says. Maximum of 44 cars.
I'll second it.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you, guys.
Welcome.
Yeah. All right. Vote to approve live entertainment license for Hanson Tavern, Inc., DBA, J and R's Indian Pub. Ms. Green.
Yes, so, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, JR's Pub, they have a Sunday entertainment license, that's correct?
No, he, I can speak to it.
Okay.
He actually did have a live entertainment license. For whatever reason, it was not in the file, so when I went through all the processing, I spoke to him about having a live entertainment license. He said he had one, which at the time, in November, he did, but I did not know that. So he did not fill out any paperwork. It, now, it expired because it was March to 2023, and now he needs to get it renewed. And I can have it set up so that it goes through December of this year, and he'll be on the schedule with all the other licenses.
Okay.
And both buyer and building have been out there to check to make sure everything is okay.
Okay, so, did anybody have any other questions for Ms. McDowell? All right, so I will entertain to, I will entertain a motion to approve a live entertainment license for Hanson Tavern, Inc., DBA, J and R's Indian Pub.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, great. And vote to approve Class II license for Auto Express. Was, what is the location of Auto Express?
That is the Franklin Street location, Mr. Miller.
Yeah.
And there, again, there should be a letter in your packet from Kerry, Mr. Glass, regarding the, is the letter in there?
It's stapled to it.
Are they together?
No. It's stapled to the license, yes.
All right. All right, so as you will recall, we had this on the list of businesses for us to renew a license for, but there had been some issues, and we weren't sure if they had been resolved. So our building inspector is saying that he can now recommend the issuance of a business license, and that everything's been satisfied to his liking. So I will entertain a motion to issue a used car dealer's license, Class II Auto Express.
Maximum 20 vehicles, correct?
Maximum 20 vehicles.
Just to make sure the license matches.
At 169 Franklin Street.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Vote to accept the intermunicipal agreement for cooperative recycling on the South Shore. Ms. Green.
Yes, Madam Chair, so we currently, we, the town of Hanson has a, an agreement with the South Shore Recycling Co-op, who basically helps the town with all types of recycling. They help us with waste recycling in all, basically furniture, mattresses. They keep us abreast of all the happenings as far as recycling and trash collection. And we actually have Arlene Diaz in the audience, who is a member on the board, who could speak with this, but this is basically a renewal so that we can continue on to, to receive the services of the South Shore Co-op.
And did our legal counsel review this?
Yes, they did, and they, they have no issues with this at all.
Did anybody have any questions?
Do we know if this has changed, or what?
The only, the only thing basically that has changed is the, is the date.
I will entertain a motion to allow, are we entering into it, or are you entering into it, Ms. Green, on our behalf?
I would be signing it on the Select Board's behalf.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to allow Ms. Green to execute the extension of intermunicipal agreement for cooperative recycling on the South Shore.
So moved.
Okay, great. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Discuss Whitman Hanson Regional School District regional agreement. We don't have Mr. Hickey here, but I did have a discussion with Mr. Lematina and Whitman, the Chair of the Select Board in Whitman, regarding the, the vote, and my understanding is that both the school committee and the town of Whitman voted to move to a requirement to have a two-thirds vote for anything coming before the school committee. So it's not just limited to financial decisions, it's everything. And although that doesn't put us back to the per pupil method, I think it does go a way towards showing that there's some partnership amongst the school committee and the town of Whitman. And I thank Mr. Hickey for his swan song to us of, of getting that, because he really worked hard on it, and it was very persuasive. Again, I, it's not done till it's done. That agreement or amendment, whatever it ends up being, hasn't been executed yet, but at least each of the respective boards have taken their vote, so that's where we're at on that. Any, any questions on that? Ms. Green, did you want to chime in on anything, or?
Just, just also to provide an update that a consensus document was finalized with all of the areas of the sections that were discussed and were agreed upon, which would deal with transportation. The transportation is still out there, but basically leases of the buildings, the two-thirds vote, capital, and there was a conversation regarding debt capital and capital as far as the buildings, and then as, as far as capital with the high school, capital with the schools that are in the individual towns. There's some wording in one of the sections in the 2018 agreement that basically says that the Select Board shall include an article in the warrant, and we kind of said they need to do something with the "shall," because that's kind of telling you you have to do it. So they're going to change the wording to "shall consider," adding a warrant to the article. But that consensus document is going to be forwarded to the town council for the schools to look over language, and then we will reconvene after town meetings and after the elections, and after appointments of new chairs and things like that, we'll reconvene and see where the lawyers are at with the review of the document.
And, Ms. Green, do you know whether both the statutory and the per pupil methodology are going to be included in the new agreement? Because if they are not, then that means that never would we be able to vote on anything other than statutory, and although I don't think we ever will, I don't think we want to backbox ourselves into a corner that way, so can we...
I, I will double check, but I don't, I don't believe that there was any, any language that would change the, the method of the assessment.
Okay, because the current agreement, or the proposed, there's been so many different versions, but the proposed amendment to the agreement was indicating that statutory, but also alternative method, which would have been the per pupil. So I just want to make sure that there's some reference to, to having the ability to use a different method other than statutory.
Okay, I will check on that. I don't recall a discussion on that, but I will double check.
Okay, I did mention it to Mr. Hickey last week, and I, and I think I mentioned it to Mr. Howard as well, but hopefully, you know, we can get that in there. Okay, great. Let's see, just, I'm just going to take a few little things out of order. Discuss Highway Department internship. Ms. Green, I think we've got a letter from Ms. Jensen.
Yes, so basically, the Highway Department has an opportunity to welcome a student, and, oh, let me just get my, my information on that, as a, as an intern throughout, throughout the summer season, where the student would mainly work on landscaping. The, any fee or wage is paid by the town, but then reimbursed to the town for that, and it's a learning experience. And my apologies, my folder is not here with that. But the Highway Department basically could really use the help with this student internship, and I think it's a program that is, it's a very, the very beginning of this program, but hopefully it will continue, and it provides really great experience to students who are looking to enter into any type of highway or Department of Public Works type of careers in the future.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions, Ms. Green?
I'm looking at the resume. He wants to be a carpenter.
Yeah, apparently he's the only one that's applied for this particular position.
I think South Shore tries to get, you know, kind of help people be well-rounded.
Yes.
They've got a great program, you know, so, that's great. Okay, so do we need to make a motion to accept him as an intern?
Just to accept, accept the program?
Yep, okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the Mass Department of Transportation Apprenticeship Co-op program.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. TA review timeline, well, there's really not a lot on the timeline, other than everybody completed their reviews. It did take a bit longer. I will not mention names, but it did take people a little bit longer to finish the reviews than I had anticipated. I'd really like to give Ms. Green a full review before the board turns over, because I think that's fair to her and fair to the people that she's worked with. So I would ask that, according to our, our town council, folks need to meet with Ms. Green individually and talk about what your concerns are, and I know several of us have. And then we will have Ms. McDowell put together all of the reviews, and the first time we will see other people's reviews will be at our meeting where we do leases review, and that's because we can't violate open meeting law. And if we were to see each other's reviews and know what somebody else reviewed, then that would be a violation. So the only person that has seen that has been Ms. McDowell, and if we can integrate that, and if people, you know, if, now would be the time, if you want to think about whether the ratings you put in are still accurate, because it was a couple months ago, now would be the time to let Ms. McDowell know if you've had any changes. So we're going to plan on the May 9 meeting. Ms. Green, would be the meeting that we would be speaking about your review. And I know you did a self-appraisal, which I believe Ms. McDowell has shared with everybody, so that's where we're at. So I just wanted to mostly say we're going to be talking about it at May 9, so let's get ready. And then, I'm not really sure, updated Select Board, did you mean calendar?
I think it's this.
Lynn, okay.
Yeah. Can I just, again, we've got a meeting planned on the second day of the year, right after New Year's Day?
You can change that.
Yeah, can we change that to the 9th?
Yeah.
What do you guys think?
Oh, I'm fine with that, yeah.
Are these dates right?
Instead of 1/2, it's 1/9.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
You met that date.
Okay, okay, never mind, I got it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I was, I also added a wage and personnel meeting to August 29 to tie into the town meeting.
Okay, that's a good idea. Did anybody have, you don't need to mention it tonight, but think about whether you've got vacations... got vacation plans. I want to make sure that we've got, you know, we're going to have a quorum, okay? And I know some weeks get kind of popular, you know, but I don't think we've got any of the weeks that would be like the Fourth of July week or whatever. So just.
When's Labor Day?
That's a great question.
This works around my schedule, thank you.
The weekend of the 2nd.
So I think we're good there. And so anyway, you can think about that. Did you need us to vote on this, Ms. McDowell?
I wasn't sure.
Well, we did vote on the prior calendar. So with the change of 1-9, 2024, instead of 1-2, 2024, I will entertain a motion to accept the revised 2023 to 2024 select board calendar.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Okay, great. And then that brings us to our town meeting review. And thank you, both of you, our financial team, for hanging in there with us, we appreciate it. I think, why don't we start with our special town meeting? Are there any opening comments or thoughts that you guys want to share with us before we dive in?
No, I mean, the only thing I would say is that there's a ton of effort, but I can classify it as a ton of cooperative effort behind the scenes to kind of, thank, to, you know, get us to where we are. I think how we got there, nobody is entirely thrilled at.
No.
But I think at the end of the day, we can get through now and then immediately go to work on the future. It's glaringly in our face that we need to jump on this sooner as we may.
I mean, our last week when we, I think it was last week, it's a big blur, but when we met with the Whitman Select Board and the school committee, we all agreed, May 2, or if for some reason, may, town meeting goes two days, then May 3, we need to start talking about what this is going to look like. We need to talk about the rules of engagement for the school district this year, despite saying very, very early in the process that we could not afford more than three and a half, the envelope was pushed and it had put everybody in a very uncomfortable and unenviable position. And we're not going to cut fire and police, that's not what this board is going to do. So, you know, we're going to have to figure out how to kind of get the school district back on track with reasonable spending within the dollar amounts that they're being told that they can spend. So, but we'd beat that horse to death. So I do want to thank both of you guys. I mean, Eric, you jumped right in, I mean, talk about baptism by blood, like, wow. You know, I mean, we had lost Todd and you just jumped right in. And I know you've, you know, taken over from Kevin and you've done an amazing job, and I appreciate all the extra hours that you guys have put in, Ms. McDowell's put in, Ms. Green's put in, and probably others behind the scenes that I don't even know. But it's, you know, I'm, I think this is, I also have to thank the Capital Improvement Committee. This is the first year that we've had like a really good process. We have, it's been years since we've had rigor around that Capital Improvement Committee process, and boy, it was good this year. So I thank Mr. Melissie, and of course, you guys that are on the Capital Improvement Committee. Okay, so Will, did you want to say anything, Eric, before we start off?
No, I'm pretty much all set. The other thing, we did mention about somebody come in and describe that school spending. I've already talked to that gentleman, so, and I've talked to Lisa about it too, so he's a go-to-do-it. He was just asking whether you wanted it via Zoom or one here in person, but that's a discussion later.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I think that that would be a difficult conversation via Zoom, but we'll take them whatever way we can get them.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, you know, I think, what are you guys thinking for timing on that? Obviously not before town meeting, but maybe like.
Soon afterwards.
Yeah, we'd say he's going to be crucial to the budget preparation for right afterwards.
Yeah, it is.
The sooner we can get him here, the better.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if, for nothing else, we want to get him in here so we can ask him questions. So maybe if he has to come, because I'm thinking it's not going to be a one-time thing where he comes in. He's going to present something, we're going to have a ton of questions, and he might have to come back.
Yeah.
So I think it's sooner the better.
All right, so our next meetings are May 9. Then we may or may not have something going on the 16 for Chief Thompson. But I think that night would be pretty much dedicated to Chief Thompson. And then the 23rd. Now, the 23rd would be the first meeting after the election, which is a reorganization and, you know, presumably have new members. I don't know whether people want to do it then or wait just till that next. My gut is telling me we should probably wait until that next after the reorganization because I think that's a lot for a new person to take in on their first meeting, like, wow, we're going to talk about statutory and how we're the wealthy town. But I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think it makes sense. I think the first meeting should be figuring out where the bathrooms are and everything for the members.
I hate to say, but there is no 16th meeting listed.
There, no, there isn't. It's not really a meeting, it's more of a.
I'm not around on the 16th.
Like a celebration.
Celebration.
You know, like.
No, I said, I want you there.
Commemoration. All right, so we'll think about maybe the, we've got the strategic planning session on the 30th, and I'm almost wondering, does, I think that's kind of compatible with what we're talking about. Do you agree, like to, I mean, because we're talking about funding anyway. I mean, it's not part of our strategic planning, but I think everybody would probably benefit from hearing that. How long do you think this presentation would be?
I would say probably 45 minutes, you know, maybe. They'll probably go through everything methodically and answer some questions. If you set aside an hour, I think it would probably be pretty good, then if there's any follow-up questions. But he'll know the background before, you know, because basically the question's going to be, you know, you know, if we have 38% of students, why are we paying 46% assessments?
Yes, well, that question's going to come up. That question's going to come up.
I would say this, to me, this is a really important one, so I think whatever agenda we put them on, it should be, like, it should be a fairly light agenda compared to that.
Yeah.
Because I have a ton of questions around the formulas and who is in charge of what. I'm, I plan on going super in-depth, so I just.
I mean, I would say an hour, I mean, if you had an hour and a half or so, then you could just have a broad agenda, ask questions, I mean, I think that would be beneficial.
All right, I'm going to, Ms. Green, can you walk this out with Mr. Kentsch? But I'm thinking, I'm wondering if it should almost be a one-off and not even just a select board meeting, because I'm sure the FinCom guys want to know how this works, right? And even the Capital Improvement guys, like, anybody that's dealing with the finances is kind of want to know. And I know we've got some concerned citizens who are going to want to know, so I kind of feel like, you know, it doesn't have to be a select board meeting, this could be just like a one-off. But obviously, I want you guys to be able to attend too. So, Ms. Green, can you kind of make magic work on that? Okay, awesome. Okay, so with that, we will dive into the special town meeting. And I guess, is our plan for town meeting and special town meeting the same as what we've had for the last two or three years, where the moderator reads the motion, well, he'll ask town meeting whether everybody's okay with him reading the motions? And then that avoids us kind of, you know, kind of going back and forth with 50,000 different people getting up to the mic.
That's how we have it presently.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Dugan, are there any articles in the special town meeting that you, the FinCom voted against that you feel like you need to kind of let us know why or anything of that sort?
There are some, yeah.
It looks like you supported all of them.
No, he didn't.
Okay. All right, so Article 1, move to town vote to transfer 2,190 13 from free cash to unpaid bills, that's standard, requires a 9/10 vote. That was recommended by both the select board and FinCom. Article 2, I move to vote to transfer 24,800 from free cash to fund purchase of protective clothing. That was for the ballistic vests, but, no, I'm sorry, that's for the, that's by the Deputy Fire Chief for the protective clothing that's kind of for the new folks. Article 3, 30,000 to supplement appropriations previously voted at May 2022 annual town meeting for fire and ambulance salaries, proposed by Fire Chief. Everybody was in favor of that. 15,000 for improvements to private gravel roads in the Town of Hanson by Highway, that's the same article we have every year, to grade and fill potholes on private ways. Again, that was unanimous. Article 5, 73,560 from free cash to fund fire department overtime costs for FY '23. And this is because he's, needs overtime while folks are getting trained. And again, that was unanimous. And then there's the ARPA, the free cash and ARPA, Article 6. So we've got Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, Hanson Middle School, elevator repairs, Ms. McDowell, it's just small, but it should be WHRSD, Hanson Middle School. The two letters are just, okay. So that's 11,870 free cash, then Hanson Middle School septic system repairs, 9,970 from free cash, police station cruiser, 62,000 from ARPA, website module template development, 18,900 from ARPA, information technology, and this is the DUO multi-factor authentication from, for 5,250, that's ARPA, information technology, time and attendance software, 5,554 from ARPA, update town policies, procedures and employee handbook, 20,000 from ARPA, financial analysis and plan development by the select board for 10,000, water department, town truck, that's from water retained earnings, select board, town administrator, update town master plan, $10,000, ARPA. Ms. Green, was that water truck in there in prior versions?
From what I understand, it was. It was, it was voted on by the Capital Improvement Committee, but we did not receive that information. We heard about it afterwards, and I confirmed it that.
No, I'm fine with it, because the Water Department has their own retained earnings, and they vote on their own thing, they're, you know, like, their own entity.
I hadn't seen that before.
No, but my point was, in the past, when we took our vote at past meetings, because this wasn't in it, our vote would not have considered this. So I will, I would suggest to the board that we vote on this again, out of an abundance of caution. So it's obviously placed, I will entertain a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Article 6 in special town meeting. Okay, all in favor? Okay. Article 7, I move the town vote to transfer 20,852 from community preservation, recreation, oh, okay, good. So this is, this is the soccer field. And they've had to split the buckets of community preservation money that are being used. So you've got the undesignated reserve fund, which is the lion's share, 194,000, but I think they ran out of money in their open space recreation fund, and so only 20,000 could come from that. But we already voted to recommend that. And did you, but I don't see the recommendations for Article 7 on here, Ms. McDowell, by FinCom or select board. At least in our handout, it's in the book, Joe says.
It's in the book, yeah, it's in the book.
In the book, it's, it's both recommended.
Where's the handout? I didn't even see the handout.
But if this is going to be the informational handout at town meeting, then we want to make sure that we've got that in there too, okay? And we already voted to close the special town meeting warrant, so there's nothing more to do on that. Okay, that brings us to the matter, annual town meeting. And Ms. Sloan, did you have anything you wanted to mention to us, or, okay. All right. So it's just, so, again, we've got the, accept the town reports, that's kind of every year we do that. Okay, and then that's Article 1. Article 2, authorize the treasurer collector to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year 2024, permitted by Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53-F. Every year this article is voted, we voted to support that. Article 3, town fix the salary compensation of all paid elected, of all paid elected officers and committees as printed in the, we don't have any paid elected officers. Oh, I'm sorry, Beth, you're literally the only one, I'm sorry. Sorry. All right, sorry, okay. I was thinking about when they did away with that. Okay, so that's your salary, which is critical, sorry about that. And everybody voted to recommend that, so we're good on that. Article 4, this is the enterprise fund, the elimination of the enterprise fund, and who is, who recommended that? Is that the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure. And that was unanimously voted on by select board of FinCom. This is the various water department ambulance funds, Title V, conservation notice of intent, all of the various funds that we get, and it's the annual lines for revenue for FY ' '24. And we all voted to, to adopt that. And then Article 6, now Article 6, we've got two versions, oh, excuse me for a moment, Mr. Smith, we actually voted to appoint you as the associate. You were quite early.
You all said that.
Yep, this is Stephen Smith, well, you probably know him, because you met him at the conservation meeting. But this is, this is Mr. Weeks and Mrs. Rain, and now we're just, we're in the middle of town.
Congratulations.
Yeah, no, that's okay, no problem. But thank you, congratulations, and we appreciate you stepping up. Okay, so Article 6, if Article 4 passes, I move to pass over Article 6. And that's because if Article 4 passes, then we don't need this itemized budget in the revolving account for the transfer station. But out of an abundance of caution, we've got this here so that we're not flying blind if Article 4 does not pass. Mr. Kentsch?
Yeah, and if it doesn't pass, if, if the Article 4 does not pass, we'd have to amend the regular budget, we'd have to take the wage collection, transfer station out of the regular budget. So if it doesn't pass, might need like a little recess to just figure out the new numbers on our budget. Basically, I have to stack up 28,850 from the regular budget if it doesn't pass.
Okay, might I suggest that since that's a possibility, that we be prepared. Like, there's absolutely no need for us to do this on the fly because we know, we can anticipate this might happen, there's already some, you know, kind of narrative and discussions happening around that. So let's just be prepared so that we don't torture Ms. Sloan and Mrs. Kelly by having them have to run around and handwritten amendments and.
It feels, this is a motion, and that's it.
Yeah, you can also anticipate that that's a reasonable question that someone might ask, what are the differences in the budget?
Yeah. Okay, great. So again, we recommended that if, if that's what we've come to. And then we've got the Article 7, 35,000 from IT expenses to IT salaries for a part-time person. And again, we voted to recommend it, FinCom voted not to recommend it. And did you want to speak to that, Mr. Dugan?
Our, our vote was more optics than actual, where, you know, we are, we went through a budget cycle that, depending upon how things worked, might have seriously had to consider layoffs. And we have a tough time supporting an article that is adding staff. So the way that this was written is that the expense is being funded from an existing line in the budget. So we wanted to be clear that this wasn't adding additional dollars to the budget to fund a, bringing somebody on board. However, once hired as a town employee, would we be sitting here a year from now saying we want to be? we want to be a full-time and we want to add benefits and that we're continuing to add to an operating budget that is beyond strained? So that was, you know, it's really centered more on the optics than the dollars.
Understood. And and I think when we spoke, you had said you weren't questioning whether we needed the help. It was just, you know, a matter of priorities of of how the money was being spent.
Right.
Okay. Did anybody have any other questions on that? Okay. Article eight, what was Article eight, Ms. Green?
So Article eight was if there was not a vote of the school assessment and the town Hanson was going to be presenting its own assessment to the for town meeting vote, that's what Article eight would have been.
Okay. Great. Article nine, that's the chapter 90 money, which obviously we want to accept, so both the select board and the FinCom voted to recommend that. Article 10, that the town vote to set the spending limits of the revolving accounts in accordance with general bylaw 2-9, section three is printed in the informational warrant. Again, we would not need to update this if the revolving account for the transfer station were to still be in effect, right? Because they've got their own separate budget.
Yeah, this revol, yeah, yeah. I understand this is the limitation of the amount being spent, not necessarily the amount in the account.
Right, right.
But yes, that that would fall under as a revolving account as opposed to the enterprise.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And again, everybody voted to recommend there, so I don't think there's any issue. Move to vote to amend the wage of personnel bylaws. And Article 2-12, classification and compensation, and it's the changes that were discussed, and it's to include part-time information technology assistant, part-time administrative assistant and select board's office and adjustment of salary ranges to reflect full-time status for veterans, agent, library, senior, center, custodian, facilities manager. So both boards voted to recommend that. Article 12, vote to raise and appropriate the sums of money to operate recreation department, pretty self-explanatory, select board and FinCom both voted to recommend. Article 13, town vote to request town planning board consider adopting amendments to Hanson's subdivision control rules. Both boards, this was the retention area, non-binding article that Mr. Howard had proposed, and both select board and FinCom voted to recommend. Article 14, vote to amend Article 3-3 of the general bylaw by adding a new subsection 2C, and this is regarding the demolition and disposal of in-ground pools. And again, planning, it's a planning article, and both select board and FinCom voted to recommend. And then Article 15, move the town vote to adopt the capital improvement program as printed in the matrix, and that's required in order for those projects to be funded. So the select board and FinCom both voted to recommend. And then we've got the infamous Nathaniel Thomas Mill water wheel situation, which was 25,000 from free cash to build the sand and reinstall the water wheel on the Nathaniel Thomas Mill. Now, did we vote to defer to town meeting? Because I remember voting against it, but you guys were for it, and then we ultimately decided that we were going to vote to defer? Is that true?
I think it was a four to defer and one.
Yeah, we voted to defer.
Okay, all right, fine. And then FinCom, three to one to not recommend. And again, I assume it's because we were in a financial crunch, we didn't. Okay.
And again, we've gone through several versions of the budget literally up until last week, but at the time of our vote, where we stood with free cash was dangerously low, and we couldn't justify supporting that expense at that point.
Okay, fair enough. And then Article 17, it's, this is the, this is required under community preservation, that you've got to allocate 10, 10, 10 to open space housing and historical preservation, and then the other 70% of your funds need to be in designated, and then they also have designated administrative fees. So it's required in order for them to be able to spend the money that we get from the state and from taxation. So that everybody voted to recommend that. Article 18, transfer 3,653, this is to place that conservation deed restriction on the sleeper property, which we acquired through grant money at Zeromacquon Street. Everybody voted to approve that, to recommend. 8,565, this is for the linen maps that Mrs. Gamache from the assessor's office had suggested be done, and both boards, both the board and committee recommended that. 65,000 for a new playground area for Cranberry Cove from community preservation money. And again, that was recommended by the select board and the finance committee. 35,000 from community preservation, open space, to restore some landscaping at Camp Guanis Cranberry Cove, and renovations to the bathhouse. And again, both the select board and FinCom recommended. 1,500 for economic development committee outreach program for Hanson businesses and to conduct outreach to bring business to Hanson, both both recommended. And then this is town vote to reduce the interest rate from to 2% from 5%, which is applicable to tax deferral and recovery agreements entered into pursuant to general law, chapter 59, five clause 41A, which provides for property tax deferral for certain qualified seniors with such reduced rate to apply taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st. And that was recommended by the town assessor and both the select board and FinCom voted to recommend. Move the town vote to increase gross receipts that seniors may have in the prior calendar year to be eligible to defer property taxes under the prior article that we just discussed. And again, that means that in order to qualify, folks could have $40,000 to have a property tax deferral clause exemption, both both recommended. Ballistic vests with carriers for our police and both the select board and FinCom recommended. 7,500 to treat invasive fragmites at Smitty's Bog, and both the select board and the finance committee voted to recommend. 20,000 to replenish the conservation fund, again, both recommended. 10,800 to patch the highway garage shop roof, and both recommended. And $30,000 to retain services of qualified firms to provide assessment for environmental and hazardous materials at the highway department site located at 797 Indian Head Street. And again, both select board and finance committee recommended. And then this is the capital, the capital improvement items, 98,500 for protective clothing, and then unit six, F-350, one ton with Sander for 140,000, and 75,000 for a unit C1, 2,500 HD pickup truck, and those are all coming from ARPA funds. And if I.
So, Jim?
Yes, yeah.
So the 98,000 for protective clothing doesn't need to be on there anymore since the special meeting article, but the 24,800, I believe that the current chief talked to Lisa and said that he doesn't need to do 98,000, just do 24,800, I think it was, in the special town meeting article.
Okay, so.
So that's already printed, I can pass over that at town meeting if you want.
So I don't think you can pass it over. I think you're going to have to offer an amendment, right, Beth?
It's up to the moderator how he wants to do it, because he would normally do line one, but, you know, let's go to line one, two, so we could pass over on line one if he wanted to, it's your call.
That's a question I'll show, I'm sorry.
I know you just joined us, so.
On the capital improvement matrix, there's three items on there, one of them is protective clothing for 98,000. Yep. That is no longer needed because it's in the special town meeting warrant for 24,800, so would be appropriate to vote for when our comes up and pass over item one of the capital improvement matrix.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll I'll call out each line and ask for people to hold. Just go ahead and hold it.
Okay, great.
And then when I recognize you, you can pass it over.
I will go ahead and do that.
Okay, all right. So should we, should the informational warrant still have it fully printed in there, just so it is consistent with what the town meeting warrant says?
I I think so. I mean, it'd be better to have more information out there.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, the informational warrant, I don't have a copy.
It's, it's, you know, it's informational, it might flesh out a little, it's like something we hand out at town meeting, that's in addition to the actual votes that people are taking. Okay. And then the South Shore Regional Vocational School District agreement is being amended. We had town council look at it, and did you not, guys not have a chance to vote on it? Or did you not know we had had town council look at it yet?
No, I, because of the way it was worded in the copy that we had, that it was, looked like it was still subject to being reviewed, and there were a couple of questions in regards to, the committee come up with in regards to just ticking in time some of the financial pieces of it.
Okay.
And I was away all last week, got back yesterday, so I haven't had a chance to connect with Ms. Green to be able to come back, to take a look at that.
Do you think you'll vote it like at town meeting night to see what they recommend?
Yeah, because we weren't going to be able to get back together until town meeting, or scheduled to be there for like half hour, 45 minutes before, tie up any loose ends, and that was on our list.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so, yeah, Mr. Dugan, I spoke to Mr. Hickey, the superintendent of South Shore Voc Tech, and originally we were not even going to place it on this warrant, on this town meeting warrant, but he kind of begged us to because he said, you know, he had some towns that were joining, and he'd like us to be sort of, you know, getting ahead of the curve and not being like a late adopter. So so we, Ms. Green asked, Ms. Federoff to review it, she said that she didn't see anything objectionable.
And, I don't think that there are any major objections. Quite frankly, I think we're looking at adding the, an additional town, what that means to the the operating assessments going forward, and the being able to try and identify the impact to the town in regards to operating assessments budgets, and keep in mind that we've previously approved a article to fund expansion.
Yep.
And the question now becomes is will that have to be revisited due to adding another town and students from that town? And those are all questions that I traded messages and, from a timing perspective, getting through the budget, didn't have time to have Mr. Hickey come in to join us, but those were following things that we wanted out.
Okay, so you feel like you'll have that button down by town meeting? Okay, all right, great. All right, that's cool. All right, great. And then Article 32, to approve an amendment to section 6, use regulations, Hanson zoning bylaw. My, I think we got an email today that the planning board held the hearing, I think that might be for the next one, of up and requirements, setback requirements from streets. So the planning board recommended that, and we recommended it. And FinCom, were you neutral about it because, or you don't?
Yeah, it's the particular specific financial impact.
Yeah.
It's a, it's an amendment to a bylaw, a zoning bylaw. I think it's, quite frankly, the only impact we could see is beneficial to the town in terms of, you know, for example, if any of these are updating things to say pieces of property that the town owns that make it more beneficial to be able to sell, that's about the only financial piece we could come up with, and that's just a amending an existing bylaw or something.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. Article 33, that's the detached accessory building, and again, that was part of the hearing, and they voted to recommend that. Battery storage farms, part of the hearing, and they voted to recommend that, we voted to recommend it. Mounted solar, small ground mounted solar arrays, recommended by Hanson Planning Board, and we voted to recommend it too. Let's see, Article 36, Hanson zoning bylaws, section seven, pork chop and hammerhead lots, section seven lot access driveways, section seven C accessory building, and section seven D off-street parking and loading areas is recommended by the Hanson Planning Board, and we recommended that as well. And then Article 37, memet to section 12, adequate access, recommended by the planning board and recommended by the select board. So that brings us to the end of our town meeting preview and voting recommendations. Pardon? Oh, yeah, I don't know why they're not in this, but I'll read them out from this. They weren't in the motions, but probably because we're having the citizens make the motion.
Citizens.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got the Article 38, to see if the town will vote to accept as a townway, Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane as laid out by the select board pursuant to general law, chapter 41, and chapters 82 as described in detail below. And this is to accept those roads as public ways. And that was a citizen's petition proposed by Sandra Crawford et al. Now, one of the things that we had asked, and I don't actually see, I thought we were going to, yeah, please see additional information listed in the information warrant. One of the things, Mr. Keely, that is not in here because it's a citizen's petition, and I don't think they anticipated that there would be costs, or they didn't have any way of knowing what the costs were for this. But there are real costs for this to the town. This is Article 38, it's a citizen's petition, to make Alden Way, Gray Lane, and Stringer Lane a public ways. And in order to do that, we've got to do, we've got to hire, we've got to get town council to do deed restriction work, and because each individual on the private way owns to the middle of the road, and we have to change that on their deed, and we have to get easements, and so this work. So we asked legal counsel for an estimate, and it could be as high as 75,000 to do that. And we thought it was important to talk about that at town meeting, because as I mentioned, I don't think that the petitioners necessarily knew that there was any cost to do that, or they didn't appreciate that there was a cost. There's also, what was the other cost, Ms. Green, from Mr. Shaw?
So we, we had a highway look and provide estimates, and I believe they were in the hundreds of thousands for road repairs, basin repairs, sidewalk repairs.
Okay, so is that going to be on the informational?
Yes, we, we're going to have a handout that will be.
And the reason I mentioned that, Mr. Keely, is because I, I'm hoping that you can make reference, although we've said it here, that there's information about the cost. And and I guess we'll probably have legal counsel talk about the cost for the legal work. I don't know who's, we should decide who's going to address the cost to the town for this, because.
Would it be possible to just talk to Ms. Crawford and see if she's willing to withdraw?
That that would not be an option.
Oh.
Yeah, that that option would not be, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And so it's a, it's a significant amount of money that we don't have, frankly, for the legal work or the or the highway work, but it's a citizen's petition, so we're required to put it in the warrant, and it's there. We just need to make sure that people that are attending town meeting know if they vote for it, you know, that there's going to be a cost to the town. And then the Article 39 is the resolution in support of changing the state flag and seal of Massachusetts. Again, this is a citizen's petition, so it's placed in the warrant, and it gives a whole history of the treatment of indigenous people and the basis of the flag. flag and seal and, and all of that. And that was submitted by Mary Ann DiMascio. This, I believe it's just a resolution. It's not really particular binding. And my, I think what I've been told is there are like 200 other towns in Massachusetts that have said, yeah, we don't like Native Americans being on the flag, and we don't like the history. And they're trying to compel the state to do something, but I don't think it necessarily has a lot of teeth, but it's just like sort of supporting that. So.
The, the difficulty I have with it is it may be just a resolution, but it could end up being hours' worth of debate.
Oh, I assure you it will.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Really bothers.
Yeah, yeah.
Not that I don't want people to have a vigorous debate, but I don't like vigorous debate at 11 o'clock at night over something that really isn't of legal meaning, other than just the sense of the town. Mary Ann can bring whatever she wants to the town meeting floor and guess, but I would just, I, I don't want to see our town meeting, which tends to be very efficient, turning into Brookline's town meeting, where they deba, they debate what the state bird should be, rather than actual town business. So, you know, that's my.
Well, I hope you haven't just called the universe in on us on that one.
Yes, I hope so too.
Don't want that to happen. So, yeah, Mr. Millissey.
Yeah, so I just want to go back to Article 38 for a second. So, I know it's a citizens petition, but I don't think that necessarily means that the town can't speak up against it, right?
No, 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 definitely doesn't mean that.
So, I think it would probably, this is just a word of advice, I think it would probably mean a little bit more if we had, you know, Lisa go up and say, this is how much it's going to cost the legal fees, and maybe Jameson say, this is how much it's going to cost the road fees, and then just make it very clear, and not just point people to an informational article, because this is going to be at the end of the night, right? People who are going to be there, it's going to be late, they're not really going to want to look at an informational article, but I think, you know, pointing out explicitly, having something come up there, it would probably be better than just pointing to the informational article.
Yeah, totally agree. And we had discussed as a board, perhaps throughout town meeting, and I don't know what your thoughts are, are on this, but in particular, as we get to this article, just to remind people what we've already spent in town meeting, because, you know, we don't have a limitless checkbook, checking account. So, you know, it's important to note that we've only got so much left in free cash, and if that article goes through, that may use up a large majority of our free cash, which will leave us in a rather precarious position. But again, it's up to the people that attend town meeting. They may say, I don't, I don't care what you've got for free cash. I, I want to make that road, you know, public, and that's their prerogative. So, so, but I do think all we can do is just arm people with the facts, and then people will decide the way they will. But, yeah, you're right, Frank. And, and, and that, that was why we had asked for legal counsel to tell us the cost, because it is not cost neutral. And, you know, we've got a lot of private ways, so I think one of the things that we need to really think about is, you know, if other folks that are on private ways that want to make them public ways, some may not, not ever, like, rise to the.
Setting an interesting precedent.
It is, yeah, it is.
Especially that the town will pay for it if it goes through.
Yeah. And just, yeah, and I, I know a lot of people have been very nervous, they've been seeing private way signs. This has got nothing to do with what we're talking about, but it kind of does. Because I was contacted by folks on Stringer Lane and Gray Lane, saying, you guys put up private way signs on my street. What does this mean? Does it mean you guys aren't, are going to stop doing stuff for us that you used to do? And it doesn't mean any of that. We'll still keep voting at town meeting the same way we have every year, to grade, to plow, you know, and if town meeting approves it, then we'll keep grading and plowing. Again, it's up to town meeting. It's a modest amount of money that we vote on every year, twice a year, October for plowing, and then this time of the year for grading. But it's just to let people know, A, you are on a private way, and for potentially people that, you know, for our guys to know, like contractors and plow folks and all that, this is private way. And also for potential folks that are going to buy houses to know that they're on a private way. People may drive by the sign and not even give it, you know, any thought. I think not, I, I, I mean, up until really just like five years ago, I really had no idea what the difference between a private way and a public way was. It really wouldn't have occurred to me, you know, that you have responsibilities if you live on a private way. So, I just don't want people to get nervous. I know a lot of people were kind of saying, oh geez, you know, what does this mean, you know, now they put that, you know, private way on, on my street, does that mean they're not going to plow great? That is not the case. Town meeting voted to have those signs put on, and by a majority, and so that's, that's what we're doing.
Also, a pretty good powerpoint presentation for vigorous debate about the flag issue as well at the end of the night, so.
Thank you, Frank.
A little bit of levity.
Yeah, we appreciate that. We appreciate that. Okay. Did anybody have anything else on that? Okay, great. Well, then, we're all set with the town meeting preview and voting of recommendations, and I thank you guys all, and we'll see you next Monday evening, and we will hope that we will get a quorum, which does continue to be a challenge. Ms. Green, I'm really hoping that we can get some publicity out there, information with the warrant, with the date, get our, our, our social media guys getting out there and telling people about it, so that we can make sure we get a good attendance.
So, yes, it is on social media regarding the town meeting. Are the warrants, the informational warrants are all posted online? They're posted on the Hanson website under the town administrator page. They can click on that, and it will bring up all of the warrants and informational warrants, and it is out there as far as all of social media.
May I make a suggestion that it actually be put under the select board?
It is.
Okay, because I don't think, I know in the past we put other things under that town administrator tab, and I don't think that's intuitive to people to always look there. I think they'd be like, oh, it's the select board, you know?
It's also on the first page.
Perfect.
That they can click, click a link, and it brings them right to that, right to that, the page with the warrants or issue.
Okay, perfect. That will bring us to committee updates. Did anybody have any burning committee updates that they needed to share with us? No? Okay, fantastic. That brings us to the town administrator report. Ms. Green.
All right, that's Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. So, there was a, just a request made regarding Imprestel LC, who is our cannabis cultivation business that we have in town, as far as revenues that have come from the company to the town to date. So, everybody has actually, I've provided a little bit of a grid sheet that just basically shows what they've paid so far to date in real estate taxes, community preservation act assessment, building permit fees, board of health fees, personal property taxes, cannabis impact fee as per the host community agreement, and gross quarterly sales payment per the host community agreement. So, to date, we have received approximately $167,650 from Imprestel LC.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for that update.
We are, we are getting the information. And so, the office has been very busy in the last couple of weeks preparing for town meeting, warrant, informational warrants, articles, recommendation spreadsheets, motions. I just, I want to recognize and give a great big thank you to Lynn for all her work on this. As you know, this is her first go around with a town meeting, and she's done fantastic. She's really just kind of fell into the position. So, a great big thank you for all of your help. Thank you to town clerk Beth Sloan, again, for her assistance with proofreading and her guidance on the motions and wording. And then again, thank you to our finance committee, our select board, Eric, our town accountant, Kate, our town council, and our town moderator, again, for all of everybody's work in preparing for town meeting. Also, with filling in that, within that timeframe, I prepared the closeout final report for the Community Compact IT Grant, which we were awarded $35,000, and that was for the purpose of being able to enhance our disaster recovery abilities, which included hardware and software that basically protect, protects and backs up all of our data and, and network systems if we were to have a natural disaster or an unnatural disaster. So, we've really enhanced all of those systems through this grant. So, that will be submitted to Sean Cronin, who's the senior deputy commissioner of the Division of Local Services, and that will allow us to be eligible to apply for the next Community Compact Grant, which would be an FY25. You can apply every other year for that grant. Also, I'd just like to recognize again, Tony DeFrayes, our town planner. He is working on the Massachusetts One Stop for Growth Grant Program, which a few months ago, he submitted a statement of interest for six projects, of which he received feedback for each of those projects, indicating that the town, we are eligible to apply. Those, basically those projects each require a separate application, which are about 30 to 40 pages long. So, he's been actively filling those out and completing those applications, which are due by June 2nd. And then we would find out in mid to late fall if we are awarded any of those grants. So, again, kudos to Tony for working on those grants. Also, we had the McQuan bid site walkthrough on Friday, April 21st. We had 14 contractors appear to walk through the school, take pictures, ask questions that I will be drafting a question and answer sheet that will go online for questions and answers. So, it's looking very promising that we'll have bids on the 4th, on the 4th of May to open that up. Also too, I'd just like to thank, so we have Green Hanson Cleanup Day is Saturday, April 29th. Like to just recognize Mike Delprey from Delprey for donating the dumpster. They do not charge the town, and they, they take the dumpster away with all the contents. So, like to recognize them for that. And actually, that will conclude my town administrator report for this week.
Okay. Now, we are slated for wage and personnel at 7:45, and we need to stick with the 7:45 wage and personnel, just in, in the event that somebody were to come and say that they wanted to be part of that discussion. So, my suggestion would be that we adjourn to executive session, which will take a very short period of time. I'm anticipating, I've now probably just called the universe in on us. And then quickly finish that up, and then by then it will probably be before 7:45, and then we can open, reopen an open session and go into wage and personnel. What do you guys think?
Perfect.
Okay, fantastic. So, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter 38, section 21a3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Robert O'Brien. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter 38, section 21a7, to review and approve executive session minutes, April 4th, 2023. I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, we are now entering executive session.
All right, I want to call the Wage and Personnel Board meeting to open Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, at 7:48. Select Board meeting room, call to order, and we're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. We only have one thing on the, two things on the agenda, one thing for new business, approve Article 11 in the May 1st annual town meeting warrant. Ms. Green, you want to walk us through that?
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the board. So, Article 11 is the Wage and Classification Personnel Bylaw. And under the bylaw, which is in the Article 11, basically we have the October 3, 2022, we have the salary ranges, then we have the salary ranges from 7/1, 2023. Most of them remain the same, because the, the range is the same. The ones that are changing are being, that are be, are being updated are the executive assistant, which you'll see, they, these are all in bold italics. So, 7/1, 2023, the salary range is going to change from $17 to $34, to $28 to $38 per hour. The veterans agent, so the annual salary as of 10/3, 2022, was $7,000 to $33,000. 7/1, 2023, it's increased from $55,000 to $62,000, and that is dependent on the vote of town meeting to increase the veterans agent to a full-time status. Right now, the veterans agent works 19.5 hours a week. And the board, the select board voted a, I want to say maybe March, to increase the salary for the veterans agent to be competitive with neighbor towns.
Now, Ms. Green, excuse me.
Yes.
I was going to say Madam Chair. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Are we, is, is our new veterans agent okay with the, with being part-time? So, in other words, if this doesn't pass at town meeting?
Yes, he is, he is completely aware, and I actually did invite him to town meeting on Monday, which he's never been to a town meeting.
Oh, wow.
So, he will, he will be there to support his position.
Okay, great.
So, yes, he's, he's aware of how this all works.
Can I make a tiny little pan in that correction?
Yes.
The executive assistant needs to be changed to italics. A, to match everything else.
Yes, that's true.
Bold italics.
Oh, okay, okay. We will correct that. All right, so continuing on, we also, we have line K, which is the library senior center custodian. And again, as of 10/3, 2022, the salary range was $18 to $24 per hour. The new salary range on that as of 7/1, 2023 will be $22 to $26 an hour. And again, that, they had, the library and senior center had two part-time custodians. They combined the position to create one full-time custodian. And then line L is facilities manager. And again, 10/3, 2022, the salary range was $20,000 to $45,000 per year. The salary ranges of 7/1, 2023 increased to $70,000 to $80,000, again, to be competitive with surrounding towns. And I believe the facilities manager was initially listed as a part-time position, so it is now listed as a full-time position.
And so, if this passes, and the individual who is currently, I mean, he's so much more than a custodian, it's really kind of crazy to even call him that, but.
Maintenance technician.
If that passes, are we then backfilling this position with another position?
No, no, this position isn't filled at all at this point, because the, the.
Oh, you're just doing the wages.
We're just doing the wages.
Okay.
Right, we're just clarifying the wages for the position. This position is, is currently not filled.
Okay, great.
We do have an employee who works very hard to manage facilities. He's a maintenance technician, but he does a lot more, but.
And, but.
But we're not creating this position for, for that.
No, the position's been out there, I get that.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know who the heck we thought we were going to get for $20,000 to be facilities manager. But if this passes at town meeting, then we will have the ability to fill this position. And then what is our plan to backfill? If, if that individual ends up getting it, again, anybody could apply, so.
Anybody can apply. So, the thought is to fill that current position with a part-time position.
Okay.
However, it is a union position, so all of those formalities would need to take place.
Okay, thank you.
But that, that is the, the thought process. And again, the, the salary differences from the full-time to part-time would make up for this.
You're suggesting this is a new position?
It's not a new position.
Right.
That's why it's a change.
So, why is there a backfill?
Because with this, we may, we could post, which we always could have done, to post that we have an opening for this position. And if we do, and somebody fills it, like our current custodian, maintenance person, then who's going to do the job that he's doing?
Where is that job listed?
Well, where is that job on there?
That's a, that's a union position under the highway contract.
So, that's not.
That is not, exactly, exactly.
Got it.
Yeah, so this position is not a unionist.
So, then why do we have a previous salary listed?
We just never filled, we never filled the.
It was a position listed at that, and we never filled it.
We just never filled it, exactly.
You look at this like a staffing sheet with just different positions that could exist, and then we determine whether or not we're going to fill certain ones.
Okay, so these aren't all filled necessarily?
No.
No, they don't represent.
They don't represent employees, they represent jobs.
Potential jobs, yeah.
Yeah, that's all. They're non-union.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, so then moving on, Section 11C, part-time positions. You will see there is a position double E, which is the information technology assistant position, which obviously from October 3, 2022 is blank. We now have a salary range from effective 7/1, 2023 of $28 per hour to $35 per hour. And then also double F is the select board, part-time administrative assistant to the town administration, select board position, which is currently, we are still currently working with the union on that position, but we wanted to get it in here for town meeting. And again, it, it reflects a salary range of $17 per hour to $34 per hour. So anything that, you know, these are bold italics because those are the changing positions. So we just need wage and personnel to vote on those, to recommend so that we could add that to the information, as, as a, as an insert into the informational warrant.
So you're just looking for a motion to, to recommend?
To recommend.
That's it?
That's all.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Second, but are we really just looking to recommend? It says approve.
Yeah, it does say approve on it, so we.
Are we approving the article?
Don't we have to approve it as wage and personnel?
How about we do this as, for the sake of, to, to be very thorough, let's, let's do what the agenda actually says and vote to approve Article 11 in the May 1st, 2023 annual town meeting warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we'll, I'll accept a, a motion to, to recommend Article 11 as printed in the handout.
Go for it, Ed.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor? All right, perfect. Thank you very much.
Don't we have to approve minutes, don't we?
And then the last thing we have is to approve the minutes for March 21st, 2023. I entertain a motion to approve.
So, second.
All right, any other discussion? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect. And lastly, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Nah.
All right, let's stay open.
There we go.
All right, perfect. Seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Are you guys keeping?